For those of you who are waiting in the Stream World, we'll be with you in about three minutes.
How's everybody doing? How was your drive-in today? I decided not to take the backroads today. Because like driving on backroads like that in this kind of weather, that's how Stephen King novels start. Hey, good, welcome. Always a good idea for us as Presbyterians to have some food to lead into something. And we can tell we're Presbyterians because the vast majority are halfway or almost to the back. We could do a Presbyterian altar call, which is make everybody move up foreplay, but it's... You're going to go into small groups in a little bit anyway, so... Welcome to our first Town Hall gathering, and let me read a text that our mission study team has used. It's a text from Colossians. And the thing to hear in this text, and I'm going to read it this way. The pronoun "he" referring to Jesus is in here 10 or 11 times. So I'm going to read it, whenever he or him is in here, I'm going to read it with the word "Christ", just so you can kind of gather the fullness of what Paul is getting at. So this is Colossians 1:15 through 20. "Christ is the image of the invisible God, the firstborn over all creation; for in Christ all things in heaven on earth were created, things visible and invisible, whether thrones or dominions or rulers or powers. All things have been created through Christ and for Christ. Christ Himself is before all things, and in Christ all things hold together. Christ is the head of the body, the church; Christ is the beginning, the firstborn from the dead, so that Christ might come to have first place in everything. For in Christ all the fullness of God was pleased to dwell, and through Christ God was pleased to reconcile to Himself all things, whether on earth or in heaven, by making peace through the blood of Christ's cross." The Word of the Lord. Let me open us with a word of prayer, and we will dive into the results of the survey. Our good and gracious God, we celebrate that we are not only in Christ, but that through Christ we have life. We not only anticipate Christ's return, we also are eager to celebrate the birth of Christ. God, we seek to be faithful to Christ. We desire to be good and faithful stewards and servants of Christ and Christ's church, the Body. So Christ, by Your Spirit, give us wisdom and discernment in our conversations, in our discussions, and as we go forward, so that in all things we may give glory to You. In Your holy name, Christ, amen. So here's the results. You've got copies. Did everybody get a copy of the Town Hall or of the Congregational Survey for this morning? So the reason we're doing this is twofold.
The next one, Rick. I have formed friendships at First Press. Ninety-six percent, yes. So we'll hear more about this in the small groups, but the relational or the fellowship component of the life of First Presbyterian Church is huge. It's tremendous. You know, this is a place where people invest in each other. They care about each other. They want to be together, whether it's Sunday morning to worship or whether they're going to the U.P. to build houses for Habitat or whether they're gathering on Tuesday mornings to make sandwiches for hand-to-hand, whatever. People here like each other, which is good, and they want to be together. And it says something too about unity, not uniformity, but unity that, you know, the church, you all know this. The church is made up of people coming at it from all different places and all different times and all different perspectives. And that's a good thing because we learn from one another. And more importantly, we remind ourselves and our differences that it's the work of the Holy Spirit who somehow, in spite of our differences, unites us into this particular branch of the body of Christ called First Presbyterian Church. So we like, we love each other. Congratulations. That's good. And I say that with an earnest heart. Very well done. Next slide. How many times did you attend worship, either in person or virtually? I think this is pretty impressive. About eighty percent-ish on a regular basis. That's a good thing. And the next slide. This one's a little bit different. How many times did you attend Sunday School prior to COVID? And the number that sticks out there is seventy-four percent said none. So you can really get down on yourself and say, gosh. Or you can say, hey, like we were talking about earlier on, here's an area, this isn't a weakness. This is an area for growth. This is an area and opportunity for us to grow into. And you'll talk more about that in your small group discussion time, which we'll break into in about, oh, five or 10 minutes. Next slide. How much time do you spend an average month in congregational fairs, including all of those different elements? Seventy percent said one to 10 hours a month. That's just a number that is, gives you an indication. The next slide. In recent years, again, this is a 2016 to 21 snapshot. Would you say that your participation in the life of First has increased, decreased, or remained the same? And that includes everything from being either on session or a trustee or some other type of ministry. And again, the good news is two to one are saying that it's either increased or remained the same. So again, there's that underlying foundation that people have a deep and abiding love for the place as well as the people. And so they invest in the people. They invest in the ministry. They invest in the worship. They invest in the mission and they invest in life. Probably by now, you're starting to hear some themes, which we will be elaborating on again when we get into small groups. Next slide, Rick. Thanks. So in which groups and organizations within the church do you actively participate? And I don't think this will surprise any of you. It didn't surprise me, and I've only been here six months. But the ones that stand out are participation in Bible Studies, Mission, and VBS. So you notice that those are focused around what I'm calling discipleship, which in old school parlance, we used to call Christian Ed. So Bible Studies, VBS, those kind of fall into the discipleship formation part, the part where we're growing as people who are following Jesus Christ. And it's also focused around mission, whether it's global or local, whether it's going to Costa Rica with Doc and Rick and their bunch or with Dave and Scott Allarding up to the U.P. Or again, whether it's the missions that we're involved in here, hand-to-hand or southeastern schools, Beasley, the support dog. What am I missing? The B bus? What's the B bus, right? Okay. So this is good. You all are focused around Christian education and discipleship, I should say, and then mission. Okay, here we get, these are a little more of the nitty-gritty, if you will. So in terms of fellowship, I see my church as, again, the overwhelming theme here is the relational component. And as we've said before, there's lots more on the relationship, the fellowship part of it that's to come in the small group discussions. The next one, in terms of worship, I see my church as, and not a surprise, forty percent are right there in the middle. And just to be clear here, when we're talking about worship in this survey, or even when you break into your small groups, we're not talking about the how of worship. That is to say, we're not talking about worship style. We're talking about worship as being the act of people, of God's people, being gathered to worship God. So it's not surprising that this middle number, number three, is the highest, forty percent, because there's been a great deal of change and transition in the life of First Presbyterian Church and systems. And most people don't do well with change. We're creatures of habit by and large, and that's okay. So again, that's something for us to take note of. And again, this is not about style. This is just about coming and worshiping and being a part of the worship service. The third one, in terms of program of education. Again, this is an area that we have room to grow. Again, we talked about this just a couple of minutes ago, that Christian education or discipleship, that can really, could be an area to focus on or an area of focus for you all. Once you get, well, once we get the mission study written and then once that's handed over to the PNC and they write their MIF. And again, we'll be talking more about that in the small groups in just a couple of minutes. Evangelism, next slide. Also, room for growth. Same thing I just said a moment ago about discipleship and education. Same thing applies there. Five, in terms of stewardship. Wow, to be celebrated. Look at that. I mean, you're looking at eighty percent are saying, this is my church. I want to be here. I want to be a part of it. I want to see it do well. I'm literally invested in it. Yes, monetarily. And also, that indicates that, again, because people give to who and to what, they feel like they belong and love. And I can tell you, having been a part of the stewardship committee, you know, you all are to be commended for the 2022 stewardship drive, considering all the change that's happened here. People have stepped up and they have given. So, well done. And again, the next one too, in terms of service to the community. That's something else to celebrate. You know, service is more or less, you know, kind of in FPC's DNA, if you will. And when we talk about service here, we're talking about whether you want to label it as mission or outreach or evangelism. Think of service as the overarching umbrella and then these other components being a part of it. But this is a huge component of who people see this congregation as being. A church that understands that we're not just sitting around here eating sandwiches, which are great, by the way. Liz, Marcia, where are you? Liz, Liz, where's Marcia? Liz, thank you to you both for the sandwiches. Thank you. We're not just sitting around eating the sandwiches, which were delicious. But, you know, we understand that we've been called and we've been given responsibility to go into our community and to serve other peoples. It's just who we are. Here we go. I don't think this will surprise anyone either. Number seven, in terms of emphasis on youth. There's kind of a both-and here. There's an interest in it and there's a desire to grow. And that's a great thing because that's, people are saying, this is important, so important that we need to do something about it. And this again is an underlying theme that you'll see in your small group discussion. So keep that in mind as you break into your small groups and talk about youth, young families, et cetera. Because that can, again, really help us, the mission study team, define the parameters, be more specific about, here are the recommendations that we've gathered from the town hall gatherings that help inform us. So when we get the MIF, then whoever's looking can say, oh, that sounds like a place I want to be. So I think that's a good thing, that there's interest and there's room to grow. And I have no doubt about it that you all will grow in that regard. In terms of unity. So not a surprise. You all have been through a lot in the last couple of years. And then you throw COVID on that. And just like any other organization, you know, COVID was the boogeyman that kind of undid everything. And the strain is normal. It's not an uncommon theme. And it's not because you all don't like each other. We talked about that earlier. You all do like each other. Probably the reason there have been strains and probably the reason that there's this lack of unity in the life of FPC, and this is not a swing at anybody. It's just simply because there's been a lack of vision or focus or call. That is to say, if everybody knows that when they come to First Presbyterian Church, we're all about A, B, and C, then everybody says, oh, that's who we are. And then that builds unity, right? Instead of you come and you're like, I don't know what we're going to do right now. So without a lead pastor at the moment, there's this sense of lack of unity. So again, that'll be something that when we process the information and then you give us that information, you'll want to digest and think about and let us, the mission study team, know what are we all, or here's who you all should be looking for in terms of the next pastor who can lead us with vision and focus and call so that unity is built up again. Because the body of Christ is always striving for its unity. Number nine, commitment to Christ. So again, this is interesting because eighty percent are saying, you know, we've got mature followers of Jesus Christ. And that seems contrary to what we just saw a moment ago, where it seems there's a lack of unity. But so there is this foundation of mature followers of Jesus, this foundation of fellowship and relational component. It's just kind of like, okay, we're here. Now what do we do? And so again, broken record. This is the information we'll get. We'll follow up with your recommendations. Everybody tracking okay so far? In terms of the Bible and reformed faith, I see myself as, you know, I think this is great. You know, this is important because it does make a difference. Denominations do make a difference. Not that one is better than the other, but it gives us a part of our identity. It says, here's who we are. And it also says whose we are. And in that way, it's how we go about the Christian life based upon the, not the parameters, but the DNA, for lack of a better phrase, of the Presbyterian Church. And so people have that understanding here. So again, there's another foundational part that's saying, okay, yeah, we know who we are. We know we like each other. What do we do with it? Okay, well, here's one where we're looking for, where there's room for growth. Number 11, in terms of communication. I see my church as, yeah, we could be doing better. Not surprising, but that'll get fixed. Again, you're living in times of change and uncertainty and what's coming next. And so that's to be expected. Part of that too is depending upon which end of the communication you're on. If you're sending the communication out to the congregation, you're feeling like, wow, I feel like we're really bombing the people and flooding them with communication. And sometimes people are like, well, I don't feel like I got anything. And so it's hard to get both ends on the same page regarding communication sometimes. And then I think this is the last one before we get into small groups? Oh, no, the last one before the conclusion. So in terms of having clear goals. And again, this is pretty much reiterating what we've talked about. I see my church as, you know, two-thirds of the people are saying it's unclear. Two-thirds of the people who responded to this survey are saying, we're not exactly sure. And so hence, the mission study and therefore the town hall gatherings. Because one of the things that's important about our reformed faith and about the Presbyterian polity is you have these committees that are doing things, but they're never set apart from the people. You always engage the people because the people are the church. We would be really silly to just say, well, we don't want to take the pulse of the congregation and find out what any of them think. To the contrary, we want to hear from you because that will help us form the overall picture of the mission study. So the conclusion, a twofold rudimentary conclusion. Basically, you've heard this throughout the presentation of the survey. Who are we? Our identity is we're relationally strong. We like each other. We want to be together. We fellowship with one another. And when we talk about fellowship, it's not just, well, we're hanging out and having dinner together. Fellowship is the understanding that it's the power. In the Greek and the New Testament, whenever the word fellowship is there, it's always the understanding that it's the Holy Spirit that's drawing us together to a common goal or for a common purpose. So that's what relationship and fellowship says. And you all have that, you know, in spades, as well as this identity of, hey, we serve. You know, we're missional. We go into the world and we serve other people. And again, it doesn't matter if it's next door or across the globe. And then the desires, from what we heard in this congregational survey, pretty much twofold, family and youth. You know, there's a strong desire to, however, welcome younger families and to be a place that welcomes youth and educates them and creates a place for them, just as this is a place for us, creating a place for those who aren't here yet, creating a place for them that says, hey, you too belong here at First Presbyterian Church. So that's the desire, the family and the youth and also the discipleship. We've heard that throughout the presentation, that the Christian Ed component, we want to continue, you all are feeling like, we want to continue to develop mature followers of Jesus, not just at the adult level, but beginning with the little ones. You know, suffer the little children and forbid them not for such is the kingdom of God, says Jesus. But, and as Presbyterians have always done, you know, teach the little ones and continue to teach them. And then we continue to grow as well. So the identity and the desires, who we are and what we want to do next. Okay. I need to take a drink of water. So let's just stay in your seats. Let's take two minutes and then we'll get into the small group part of the conversation, okay? Feels like about two minutes. So Rick, if you can click to the next slide there. So the small group discussions, self-explanatory. We're going to break you into groups in just a second. But the discussions you're going to have in your group are going to be focused on these four questions that were at the latter part of the congregational survey. And again, it's really important that you all chime in on this because we're going to be building on the responses you all give. So have at it. Dream, plan, imagine, hope. Think about it in terms of what you desire, what you think, what you hope First Presbyterian Church will be in the next and for the next 10 or 15 years. That's the underlying hope, is that your next pastor is here for a while, that he or she leads you for a while. So as you give us your recommendation, again, the mission study is going to take these and we're going to use them to help us write our mission study. So we've got, let's see, Dave Logan is here from our mission studies team. Kim Bosma is here. Harold was here. Where's Harold Lewis? There's Harold. Okay, so what I'd like to do is I want to break you up into groups of about six or seven. And we're asking that spouses go to a different group, okay? And some of you will say, yay! And some of you will be like, yay! But let's break you up. So let's see. Scott Allarding and Wendy and Sandy and Tom and Cindy and Don Rounds. If you all will form a group and maybe go over in that corner over there. And what we're going to ask you to do... Oh, and I forgot. Linda McGuire is here too. How could I do that? Cindy, come up here before you go over there. Linda McGuire is here too. So I'm going to ask Linda to be your liaison. What you're going to do in your group, once we get started here, is appoint someone within your group to be the note taker or the clerk. So it's got to be someone who's, you know, got pretty decent penmanship, someone who can write. So we're not like looking at, you know, doctor's prescriptions or something that are completely illegible. Okay, so that's group one. So, and Linda, will you be there? Linda McGuire, who is also part of our mission study team, she's going to be your liaison over there. So a second group, we're going to send with Kim. So let's send Kim with Barb and Dan Carpenter and, let's see, Sally and Ned and Steve and Dwayne. Is that six or seven? How many was that? Is that six? So why don't you all go over here for now? And then we'll just have Ed slide over here so that they can have that area. And let's see, Dave Logan, will you be their liaison? All right. Oh, yeah, we'll get a group to you. No, Dave Logan's going to be their liaison. Okay. So this next group, Kim is going to be your liaison. So Liz and Barb and Celeste and Nancy. And who's that behind? Yeah. Oh, Gary. Sorry, I've got terrible vision. Gary, how many is that? Five? Is that five or six so far? I lost track. Doug, so why don't you make your way over to Kim a second? You get to be, you get to be. No, you're not, whoever. How many is that over there? They need one more? Heidi, how about if you join over there with Kim? All right. Good, all right. And then let's see. Harold's in the back there. So let's get a group with Harold. So we've got Dave Allarding and Pat and Bonnie and Jane Arnold, Darla, and Jan. I didn't say Don already. Did I already say Don? Oh, I can't. Oh, sorry. Well, I almost broke my own law, Jan. Oh, no, the misery of it all, yeah. I'm sorry? Oh, you're over there. Oh, you are? Okay, so yeah, so Jan, you can join with Harold. For whomever your note taker is. Man, let's see. How many does that leave left? I wish I could afford a couple of schools. All right. Ed, why don't you join over in group number one there? Eldon, where's Pat? Is Pat over in this one? Okay, so Eldon, why don't you join Kim's group? And then, let's see. Marcia, why don't you join Harold's group? And then the rest of you will be with me up here. How's that sound? Okay. So here we go with the instructions, okay? So we're in our small group, all right? So the first thing to do, take one minute. Just go around your group. Tell people your name, city and state you were born in, okay? Just do that in one minute and then we'll come back to question one. Okay, I turned it off. My bad. I mean, think of all of the beauty that Dave gets to bask in right now. I mean, when did that happen last? Oh, wait, where's Jane? Sorry. Okay. Everybody got through your little icebreaker? Okay, look at question one in your handout. Okay, so these are the four separate questions. We're going to go through them one at a time. And you're going to write down your responses and/or your recommendations. So we asked you, why do you participate at Fifth? Why Fifth? First, sorry, serve too many congregations. Why do you participate at First? Why is this place your home? And as you... And as you all heard, the overwhelming reason was why you all come here is because of the relational component, because this is your home. This is your church, family. So what we want you to do in your group for the next 10 or 15 minutes is if you look at your questions, especially question one, how do we use the existing relationships? We have the fellowship. So how do we use that capital, if you will, and build family and youth ministries and missions? Because those were the two desires that were coming out of the congregational meeting. So we've already got the great foundation. We've got the relational, the fellowship component. So for 10 or 15 minutes, let's mark it for 15. Talk about how you can use the relationships and the family of God, not nuclear family, but extended family, the family of God, the relational component. How can that be used to build and to grow family and youth ministry as well as missions? And especially number three as well. Who does the next pastor need to be? What are the qualities or the qualifications? What things are you looking for, him or her, that will help you do that? That will help you say, hey, First has amazing relationships here and we want to use them to build family and youth ministry where we can give other people who don't know it yet that this is their home and continue to serve in the world. Does that make sense to everybody? Any questions? And you've all got your clerk? Okay. So 15 minutes and away you go. At the risk of interrupting good conversation and good dialogue, hit pause on that.
Yeah.
All right. Wrap it up in about sixty seconds, okay? At the risk of interrupting good conversation and good dialogue, hit pause on that. We're gonna go to the second question here in just a second. And from what I'm hearing, just casually observing up here, it sounds like there's very good fruitful conversation. Excellent. This is exactly what our team was hoping and looking for. Okay. Question two, you can look at this in your handout as well. We asked, what are the strengths of First Presbyterian Church? And you said, okay, not a surprise, the relational component, the fact that we're missionally minded, that we serve other people. And you also said, the message, that is to say, our biblical identity being rooted and reformed in Presbyterian biblical understanding, okay? So again, based on those responses, that will be asked, that's what we asked. And you all said, the strengths are, we like each other, we serve, we know who we are biblically. So with your group conversation, focus on the first and the fourth questions in your group conversation there. What existing strengths can we grow and improve? And how can you and/or your group and/or this church be mentoring the next generation, the generation that is not here yet? How can you be mentoring on an individual level? How can we be doing that as a congregation? And with regard to number one, what existing strengths can we grow? Remember, the existing strengths we had were missions and fellowship. And by improve, we're talking about places that, well, we're not weak there, but it's a desirous area where we want to improve. And that would be specifically the Christian ed component, the discipleship component, from children to young adult to adult to end of life, as well as improving in, as you've already talked about, family and youth coming and being a part of this community and us creating opportunities for them to get plugged in here. Everyone clear on that? Make sense, everybody? Any questions? All right, setting my magic timer for fifteen minutes. It's not really magic, it's just an Apple phone. Coming up in five minutes. Go off there. Okay, we're at fifteen minutes here on that conversation. I'm sure I'm interrupting some good dialogue. My apologies. Let's move on to the third. And you'll notice in your handout, the third question is, what we asked, what are the weaknesses of First Presbyterian Church? And the overwhelming response we got here was, people were talking about their, their lack of love for change or just going through the process of change. And two things really come to mind when you talk about change. One is, you all know, you're human beings, that there's the inevitability in life of change. Not simply changing for the sake of change, but in our general lives, we go through change all the time. And that's true of systems, whether it's a congregation or a corporation, et cetera. So it's inevitable that this congregation would go through change. And sometimes change is needed. And again, this is not any finger pointing or saying, we got it wrong, et cetera. This is coming out of the, the understanding that we are reformed and always reforming, that who we were ten or fifteen or twenty years ago, while that is to be celebrated, and while we give thanks to God for having been able to be that particular congregation at that particular time, it's a different time. So who is it God is calling us to be now? So understanding that change is difficult. Think about Jesus and the twelve, right? Jesus said to them, leave everything and follow me. And you don't really get much more drastic, much more drastic change than literally drop everything and come follow me and I'll teach you a new way to live. But understanding that change is difficult, and most of us, you know, given our druthers, would rather not go through it. In your groups, talk specifically about number one and number three. The, the, number one is, what are you willing to give up? And give up in love. And love is, is the agape love of the New Testament. The love that is selfless. The love that is given and shown for A, B, and C. For those who aren't here yet, you know, for our sign out here that says, right outside our sanctuary here, I love this sign, it says, all are welcome. How do we, what, who, who do we need to be? What do we need to give up in order to continue to live into that? For those who aren't here, to continue to be more welcoming. And in this regard, I am talking a little bit more numerically about how growing the congregation, about, you know, adding more people to the life and to the work and to the witness of First Presbyterian Church. And then conversely, but also just as important and just as necessary, when you go through change, what's, what's important is you have to celebrate what has been. You know, you go through a period of life, you don't just, you know, not look back anymore. You say, well, this, this is who God has led us to be for a hundred and seventy-two years. So that being said, with number three, how can FPC celebrate who she has been for coming up on a hundred and seventy-five years? How do we celebrate that and use that as kind of a stepping stone into what will be? And that, by celebrating the past, it will help us with transition. You, you think about a funeral, and I'm not suggesting that FPC is dying, but when you think about a funeral, you're there to celebrate the person's life. You give thanks for their life, but you also understand that this, this is the greatest change they go through, that they are now in the arms of Jesus. But we don't just turn away from the past. We think about when you've attended the funeral of someone and you go in this fellowship time. What do you do? You sit there and you share stories of this person. You celebrate their life. And in a way, we're doing the same thing. We're not dying here, but we are changing. We're going into a process of change. And one of the things that'll help us do that is to celebrate who we've been in the past, because that will continue to kind of keep us anchored in who we are. So as, as we grow and do that. So as we change, what is this congregation willing to give up? In selfless love for people who aren't here yet? Or for people who we want to welcome? Who we might otherwise not welcome into this community? And how can we celebrate God's faithfulness to this place, this ministry called First Presbyterian Church? Clear? Good? Okay, fifteen minutes. We're about three minutes. Coming down to one minute. One minute. All righty. Coming around the home stretch here. Last part, I would say we'd have you home in time to watch the Lions, but then again, the Lions are 0-10 in one, and they played Thursday, so what difference does it make? However, if you're a Michigan fan, go blue. Ferris, any Ferris State in the house? Are you the only, the only Ferris State in the house, Sal? There you go, okay, all right, Ferris. Who are they, they're? They did? Okay, Ferris State won, everybody. All right. Now that we... Now that we have everybody's attention, go to question four here, and as you just spent fifteen minutes talking about change, and the process, and the inevitabilities of it, the final question we asked at the end of our survey, what is a change you would make to First Presbyterian? And of the seventy-some-odd people who responded, there were seventy-some-odd differing responses. There were, there were some themes that were the same, but by and large, they were all over the place. It was fabulous. What we'd like you to do here is spend the next fifteen minutes coming up with two agreed-upon recommended changes for the life of First Presbyterian Church. And we're asking for you to kind of flesh them out, give us some details. So if you say, "Try and get a pastor as cool as Bruce," you know, put down A, B, C, D, E, something like that, you know? If you want to say, "Try and get a pastor who's as good-looking as Rick Vandenberg," good luck, it'll never happen. But, but if you, when you have your two ideas, flesh it out, give us a, a list of how you would recommend we go about doing that, okay? So two ideas that the entire group is on, that your entire respective group is on board with, what they are, and how you all envision them getting lived out and leaned into, okay? All right, fifteen minutes, then you get to go home. Alright, fifteen minutes, then you get to go home. About a minute, one minute. Make sure we turn the heat, was it not on in here?